We'll call the meeting to order. Everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Campbell? Dempsey?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Crop?
Here.
Menzner?
I'm here.
Voorhees?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Campbell.
Mayor Crop, I move to excuse Commissioner Campbell from the meeting.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Dempsey?
Here.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports, it looks like none are listed on the agenda. Do any of the commissioners have anything else to add? Okay, hearing none. Move on to adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Crop, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Here.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Before we go any further, we just want to mention that Commissioner Dempsey is not being obstinate by any means, not speaking clearly. She had oral surgery and can't really, she's gonna, we're gonna maybe do some hand signals if we need to. So. Yeah, yeah, I think that might be a better way. Yeah, right, right, exactly. So, all right, this is the portion of the meeting where we allow the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. First, we will have the people in attendance, and then we'll go to our friends on Zoom. So, at this time, if anyone would like to address the commission, please come to the microphone.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing today? Hope everybody had a good morning? Ah, my name is General McCants, like 50th and Clinton Drive. Over in Clinton River Ave is over there. We have a lot of speeders. We bump up the patrol a little bit more. Kids out of school, riding their bike, enjoying themselves on them streets through there. They're just, woo, a little too quick. Appreciate it. We can kind of get somebody to kind of slow them down a little bit, give us some citations or something. We got to do something.
You said Clinton River Drive, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to Zoom. Do we have anyone? Okay. All right, we'll go back to the agenda. Administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the previous meeting. We have none, so we'll move on to approval of minutes.
I move to approve the city commission meeting minutes for June 20 of 2022.
Support.
Any questions or comments? I'll call the roll. Call the roll, please.
Dempsey?
Here.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to general business. The resolution approving a social district permit for Gumbos. I'll entertain a motion.
Public participation.
We just did that.
That was it?
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the attached resolution approving the application of Gumbos LLC, a Michigan limited liability company doing business as Gumbos for a local social district permit, and to recommend approval to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. The city commission created the Oasis Social District last spring, April 5, 2021. The program ran last summer with just two restaurants participating, Abebo and Cellar 311.
104.
I'm sorry, Cellar 104. In spite of the numbers, I think it was very successful. We had absolutely no problems because of it. The sheriff's department has reported no incidents. I know it was very successful for the restaurants that participated, particularly for Abebo, especially since they're close by when we did the concerts. You saw pretty much one of their glasses on almost every table. We have finally our third applicant, Gumbos, which is a relatively recent addition to the establishment serving alcohol in Mount Clemens, and we are recommending the commission approve Gumbos to be part of the social district.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
All right. 9B, approve Karn's lease agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Karn's Community Center lease agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, this has gone through several phases. We were most recently working with the library, but the director advised me that the library will not be able to take on this responsibility. Until we're ready to do it ourselves, we proposed to lease the facility to TCB Youth Mentoring. The attached lease prepared by the city attorney is on a month-to-month basis, but does have a 90-day termination notice requirement. And the reason for that is because a lot of the programs are longer term, that they may go eight to 12 weeks, and we didn't want to be able to shut them down in the middle of a program.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Menzner.
So this is what I've been asking for since February, a memo of understanding, a lease or a contract. So I'm really happy to see this. I do have a couple of questions. I just need some clarification. It says, "Purpose of lease. Tenant shall not use the premises for any commercial use or for-profit activities." So my question is, is that when a group comes in and uses the facility, the dance class, you know, and charges, I don't know, two or five dollars, or we had the Juneteenth celebration where we charged more for the vendor tables, can that money be looked at as to help pay for the maintenance? Because this agreement is pretty clear what the city will provide, and then what, you know, TCB's responsibilities will be. So if he, if Mr. Barnes or TCB were able to, you know, rent the facility for a funeral luncheon or because of the, you know, the money accepted at the dance classes, is that not looked at as profit? And can it simply go towards the maintenance, you know, the cleaning of the bathrooms, the providing of the supplies? Because I imagine that, you know, over time, you know, that can build up. So I just simply, because it says specifically education and/or recreational activities and not-for-profit, just give us a guideline there.
It's my recommendation at this time that we're not authorizing rentals of the facility for things like funerals, weddings, receptions. I think long-term, we may want to do that. There's certainly a demand in that neighborhood for such a use, but I think we need to think through it exactly how we want to allow it to happen and what we want to allow to occur there before we let that go. Right now, it says recreation and educational activities.
Okay.
And I think to address the other, I think there were two questions there.
Yeah, basically.
So the other question about if somebody charges a program fee, I think of it as paying the teacher that's teaching the dance class and paying the, you know, person for the time who's sitting in the, keeping the doors open. And, I mean, I think they have to pay people to be there, so I think there's that aspect of it. It also stated in the lease that it's not to be used for profit, but I think that it's, but to maintain those program fees so that you can run programs, because programs are expensive.
Yeah, well, that's a point. And again, can some of those fees be used to pay for, you know, the toilet bowl scrubber, you know, the comment for the sink, you know, the Clorox for the kitchen?
Number one, when the city leased facilities to the YMCA, a very similar situation is this, leased ball fields, Swinton, leased some other things. The idea was that the city is not running these programs, is not micromanaging these activities. YMCA would charge certain fees to participate in programs. I think clearly they're entirely, you know, they can charge for program fees. And, you know, the not-for-profit, the idea is not to run out the place for 500 bucks for somebody's bachelor party and put the 500 bucks in your pocket. You know, the city can't authorize that. But charging fees for activities, I think that's clearly within the purview of the reason.
Perfect.
I think it seemed, yeah.
That's what, that's what we wanted, I wanted to hear.
And I believe the dance class donations are going to the scholarship for Mount Clemens students.
It clarifies an issue that has come up, and I'm happy to hear that and hear it from the attorney. So that gives Mr. Barnes and TCB some direction. I'm good.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Here.
That was a yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
We gotta, we need to do the thumbs up, barb down. All right, we'll move on to general business. 9C, amend water ordinance, cross-connections, first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the introduction and first reading of an amendment to 25.137, Section 7, Cross Connections of the Mount Clemens Water Ordinance, and to set July 18 for the second reading and adoption.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
In the past, the cross-connection program applied to commercial and industrial properties. The Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, better known as Eagle, now mandates that cross-connection programs also apply to residential properties. The city attorney has prepared an amendment to the city's water ordinance, making that so. Actual recommendations on how it's done is based on the recommendation of HydroCorp, the city's consultant, to comply with state requirements and ensure safe and reliable drinking water.
Okay, any, go ahead.
Yes, what exactly is cross-connections?
Situations where the water lines are ultimately connected to the, or can be ultimately connected to the sewer lines. Very common things where this may happen is if somebody has a hose and they leave the end of it in the swimming pool. Under certain circumstances, you can siphon water back from that pool back into the water system. Same thing with a bucket or a wash tub. Some people used to typically have a short piece of hose on their wash tub, and that hose could actually reach down into the water that's stopped in the tub. That can actually introduce sewage water into the water supply system.
Okay, so we are allowing that here?
No. We're specifically not allowing that here.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
Mr. Menzner?
So I'm reading something here about cross-connection program fees and about charging the consumers reasonably related to the service provided. Do we have a fee schedule? Is there something that, are we going to adopt a new fee? What is this about?
That will come later.
That will come later? And that means what? That it's going to come back as a?
As a fee schedule.
As a fee schedule?
So are all residents going to have this fee on their water bill? Is that?
This, I believe, applies to when an inspection is done. Is that correct, Mike?
I don't know. I don't know. I know very little about it.
Well, sure.
Mr. Jeff would know far more about the mechanics tonight.
So it would probably apply more to those that have like irrigation system. And the irrigation system requires a backflow preventer as a result of a cross-connection. So it would apply more so for residential properties that have irrigation systems.
So those? Yeah, so those that have irrigation systems is more likely than not have additional fees.
Correct.
Lovely.
I'm going to try.
Okay.
Isn't this state mandated?
It is.
And it has to be inspected by a state-certified inspector?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So they're going to inspect what? All the irrigation?
Well, they're going to look for, so basically what they're going to look for, if there's a cross-connection, they're going to make sure that you have a backflow preventer. So like Mr. Johnson was explaining, it wouldn't allow water to get back into the system.
So if you don't have a backflow?
If you don't have a backflow preventer. I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly how the fee schedule or that ordinance is written, but that's what it is, so.
So does this fee go to the Eagle, or does it go to the city?
Again, I'm not sure.
It would go to the city.
Do it go to the city?
And you'll do it by resolution. You do fee resolutions every year.
Well, it just seems like, this is almost like a hidden tax, and I'm, I'm not happy about this.
But the state's mandated.
So who does the inspection for it? The city?
The HydroCorp. Does all of our, or does, in the past, has done the majority of our cross-connection inspection.
Because they are, they have to be a state-certified inspector?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Everybody good?
Good is relative. Well, we have to do this, right? It's mandated.
Sounds like it, yeah. Right. All right, call the roll, please.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
No.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
General Business 9D, Dangerous Animal Ordinance, first reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the introduction and first reading of the Dangerous Animal Ordinance and set July 18, 2022, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
This is Mr. Murray's report, so I'll defer to him.
On June 6, the city commission held a work session relative to the issue of dangerous animals. Jeffrey Randazzo, the McComb County Animal Control Chief, was present, participated in the work session. At the conclusion of the work session, the commission directed that a Dangerous Animals Ordinance be drafted, and this is such ordinance.
Okay, who has questions? Mr. Menzner?
So I think this is a beautiful document, and I appreciate you doing it. I just have some questions here about our animal control officer, or two officers, and how their job duties will change, and if we have a document, or can we craft a document that lists the steps for them to take when they go to a residence and encounter some kind of, you know, dangerous animal? Or there's a dangerous animal running loose, you know, through the city? So, you know, I just highlighted, you know, a couple of things about the animal control officer classifying, you know, any dog or a dangerous dog. And, you know, it says, "Shall notify the dog's owner of such classification," and there's some steps. And then it says something about the dog being immediately confiscated. So because this is comprehensive and it is a change, I just wanted to make sure that our animal control officers are thoroughly familiar with this document and any changes in the procedures that they will be following.
They reviewed the document, understood it, and had no revisions that they wanted to make. Mr. Wood, once again, knows more about that than I do, but they reviewed it. I would also point out that I don't think there's going to be any huge changes in their duties. We have them making this determination with an appeal process, mainly because I don't know who else would be doing it. We don't have our own police department where you can put a lot of those kind of responsibilities on them. And a number of communities formed a committee, and I don't think you need a committee to go through a big procedure relative to making this determination. If the people, and if there's a problem, if you notice the end of the ordinance says, "In lieu of the animal control officer doing all of this, the animal control officer can file a sworn complaint with the 41B District Court, and the court can do it."
We talked about, so we will still have our own animal control people?
Yeah, until such time as the commission decides they want a contract with the county to provide that service.
Because we did all seem very positive about that county service and?
I think they're waiting, they're waiting to get figures back from the county.
Okay.
But Ezra Randazzo said he wanted, under any circumstance, he wanted an ordinance.
Sure, no, I understand that.
Whether they were doing it or we're doing it, so.
But I just wondered where that was.
I have no idea.
Mr. Wood has met with the county. Jeff, would you like to report on that, please?
So I met with Mr. Randazzo and Mr. Delden, and we went through everything. And we will be getting numbers by the end of July, is the plan. So Mr. Randazzo is on vacation and some other things, so he has to also work with finance there and get everything figured out.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Can I say just one?
Of course.
For the second meeting and adoption, I, I, Mr. Wood pointed out, and I think he's right, that the ordinance talks about registration, and it has a McComb County registering with the McComb County Sheriff's Office. I'm going to add "and/or" the city clerk, because we are not real sure how the sheriff would handle that. So I'm going to, that's going to be changed for the final reading. It's just going to have "and/or" the city clerk, in two spots.
Okay, anybody else? All right, call the roll, please.
Menzner?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
General Business 9E, purchases and payments of invoices. I'll entertain a motion.
Where's Commissioner Campbell? Motion to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Commissioner Menzner?
I just wanted to thank Lenny Bertrand for his continued, and his staff, his continued hard work. You know, I look at some of these invoices, and these guys are really making some differences in the water treatment and clarification plan. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which it looks like there's nothing to report on consent today, so we'll go to the city manager's report. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Recreation coordinator, we had over 170 candidates. That includes the ones that came into Indeed, and oftentimes the candidates that come into Indeed aren't even aware that they applied for the position. Eleven were invited to interview. Eight of those actually scheduled Zoom interviews, which is what we used for the first round. Three of those did not appear for their scheduled interviews. In our initial round last week, narrowed the field to three candidates who've been invited for more extensive in-person interviews tomorrow. Fire Department Red Cross Blood Drive, that needed to be rescheduled, and it's been scheduled for Wednesday, July 13. To make an appointment, go to AmericanRedCross.org. Upcoming events, before we talk about upcoming events, let me congratulate Mickey on the fabulous fireworks. They did a really, really nice job. Maybe not quite as spectacular as the one local city that did their whole fireworks in about 15 seconds, but certainly more satisfying. The Uptown Friday Night Concerts return to the Fountain Stage on July 8, featuring Strictly Fine, a funk and soul band, party band. On July 15, the Joe Allen Band will be showcased. These concerts will continue every Friday night through and including September 30 for a total of 12 weekly concerts. In addition, the DDA will be presenting three more Saturday evening riverfront concerts. We had the first one in conjunction with the fireworks. And those will be on July 23, August 27, and September 24. We have one more of the Cultural Harmonies concerts, which are using the percussive instruments, including the musical sculptures at the Cherry Street Mall, and that'll be July 16, from 2 to 4. More good news on COVID, the cases are falling, not as quickly as they were a couple of weeks ago, but we still decreased by another 7% in terms of new cases, and deaths were down 27%. The county, they actually, I think, started this a couple of weeks further back, but I got this updated, is it's now, the age limit is six months or older to be eligible to receive a COVID vaccine. You can go to McComb County Vaccine Central for more information and to register. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson? I have one question about the blood drive. Do we have to make an appointment ahead of time, or will they accept walk-ins?
No walk-ins.
No walk-ins, okay, so make sure you schedule an appointment. Excellent. Anyone else have any questions? Good, hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to public participation. This is the second opportunity the public has to address the commission. We ask that you give us your full name and your residential address, abide by our two-minute rule. We'll again start with everyone who's in person and then look to Zoom. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission?
Good evening, Commissioner. Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street. They say you got to give people their flowers while they can enjoy them. So I would like to thank Mr. Wood and his entire department for all the extensive work that they have been doing at the Karn's Community Center. Seems like almost every day I'm there, I see somebody in a Mount Clemens truck come up. They have cut down, they have cut and pruned the trees to the specification of the Mount Clemens Beautification Group, which was pretty extensive. It was pretty extensive, and those ladies sat there and they made sure they got it all together. I have seen them out there cutting grass. It has, it has just been awesome to see the strength and the power of our city services and our community kind of coming together and working hand-to-hand together. Also, I would like to thank Mr. Johnson for your time here in Mount Clemens with us. I don't know if the rest of the city has seen the change, but I have. It's funny, as you were reading your city manager report, I can't ever remember hearing a city manager report from you where you didn't report on COVID. Thank you for getting us through a very tough time here in Mount Clemens. Thank you for getting us over the hump. The new city trucks look beautiful, the new logo on the trucks are gorgeous. Just thank you for all that you've done to serve all of us here in the city of Mount Clemens. And lastly, tomorrow, at the Karn's Community Center, Movies with Miles, we'll be showing the eight-part Harry Potter series. So from noon until 3 PM, you guys come out and join us, sit down. So from noon until 3:00 PM, you have to come out and join us, sit down, watch a movie, enjoy some popcorn. Never miss a Monday with the Mount Clemens Library, that's every Monday throughout the summer from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM, and there's a bunch of cool activities for kids, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Dante Walker, 163 North River Road. To all the residents in the community, do not forget that August 2nd is the primary day to go out and vote. Your vote matters. Last election, I didn't like the numbers, the turnout, so please do that for a policy side major like me. Get the turnout numbers up and participate, because it matters.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the commission? Do we have anyone on Zoom? No, okay. We will move on to Commissioner comments. I'm going to start with Commissioner Dempsey, but you want to write something down? Okay. All right, well, thank you. We'll move on to Commissioner Voorhees.
God bless you. Thank you, Mayor Crabb. I would like to thank all the law enforcement professionals who responded to the July 4th situation. I'll let the mayor and other commissioners discuss that. I am disturbed by the recent ads stating that dead people vote. To me, this is an insult to every clerk and election worker in the state of Michigan. Integrity in our election process in Mount Clemens is at its highest level. I have run in two elections and every vote was counted and the results were accurate. Dead people do not vote in the city of Mount Clemens. Best wishes to our clerk, Mrs. Martin, and her whole staff of workers. Thank you for the great service.
Thank you.
And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzger.
So I've already made my appointment to have my blood drawn at the fire department event that will be at the Carnes Center. I intend to have a little fun with this and I intend fully to win the prize package that if you donate blood before the end of July, you can win a paddleboard and a tent and all kinds of fun things. So if you ever want to go camping or paddleboarding, you know, go sign up to donate blood, because, you know, you could be paddling right next to me, because I intend to win.
Paddling on the glen?
Yeah. So, and right now, you know, I'm an O, they call me constantly, but I saved my blood for the fire department this year. So we're desperate. The Red Cross is desperate for blood. So please, if you can, go donate. And Captain Shipman will be there to help you, Chief Shipman will be there to help you. And we have some medical experts in case, you know, you fall off the gurney like I have done once already. I want to also give a shout out to the Sheriff Department for their professional way that they handled this yesterday. And it's not just because my brother-in-law happens to be a SWAT department sniper, or a SWAT team sniper and was up in the fire truck bucket. It was handled carefully, tactically, and perfectly by our Sheriff Department and the other departments who joined. And I give them all of the credit in the world for this. They kept our residents safe, they kept our buildings safe, they kept St. Peter's safe when this gentleman was firing towards the church. All credit goes to our Sheriff Department and Sheriff Wickersham and the SWAT team and the members of the Macomb County Sheriff Department and the Mount Clemens Fire Department and the other departments who joined in, so. And I wanted to comment, you know, for 30 years, Seminole Hills has had a bicycle parade on July 4th. The kids gather at 11:30, you know, at one of the pocket parks on Esplanade and Balmoral. The fire truck was there this year to lead the parade. And it was firefighter Noah's first time leading the parade, so I think he had some fun with it. The kids enjoyed it immensely. The Algeur family and others provided hot dogs and water. But to see not only the kids with their decorated bicycles, but the adults who had, who decorated their, you know, golf carts, Mark Callis had the most beautifully decorated golf cart with stars all over and banners and, you know, he was wearing patriotic clothes, so the adults were into this also. And so it was a wonderful event. This is what our community, this is what our neighborhoods are about. It's about being with each other, sharing with each other, and having pride in our community and in our country. This was a wonderful event. And next year will be the 31st year and I invite you all to come on out, because you will never see anything like this small hometown parade with kids on bicycles and tricycles and in carts and in wagons and just simply walking. And some of the adults, one of them in particular mentioned to me that he hadn't been on a bike in a very long time and he was concerned that he needed training wheels. So it was a lot of fun. Commissioner Dempsey led the pledge of allegiance. I said a few words. And the fire truck led the neighborhood, you know, led the kids and the adults and the riders throughout the neighborhood. It is the epitome of small-town pride. So I'm hoping River Acres does this next year and that's a challenge to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond.
Thank you. Just want to let everyone know that you are not alone. Macomb County Community Mental Health is here to help you. They have a 24-hour, 24/7 crisis line, which is 586-307-9100. Again, the 24-hour crisis line for Macomb County Community Mental Health is 586-307-9100. And I also want to thank Don for his service here with Mount Clemens. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Voorhees.
So the fireworks were amazing. Thank you so much, Mickey, and everyone that was involved with them. It was just, it was, it was just great, a great night. We had great weather. It was wonderful. And also, I can't say enough for the Sheriff's Department. I happen to be up north, sitting around the campfire, but let me know, let me just tell you that the social media lines are alive and well, because I was getting, my sister was with on one thing and my nephew on another, and we were getting blow-by-blow's on every, everything that happened. But they did an amazing job and we are very fortunate to have them. I also wanted to give a shout out to Brandon Bowman, our library director, who has to retire early. I'll say retire, but for his health reasons, he's done an amazing job and a very devoted man in the community and has done so much for the library and the community, and we will miss him greatly. I feel very bad that he's, he's leaving. And with that, I think that's about it for tonight. Thank you.
I want to start off by saying yesterday was a really unfortunate situation in Mount Clemens. It's felt like for a moment there, for every step forward, we have two steps back. And I, and I thought, oh, we've had so many good moments happening in Mount Clemens and then this really bad story that hit the papers and the news and a terrible situation. But then I thought about it and I thought all of the, all of the heroic acts that went along with it and all, and how it could have been so much worse and how lucky we really were in that sense and how lucky we were that Clinton Township and Harrison Township and Shelby and Sterling Heights, it didn't matter that they aren't our police force. It mattered that Macomb County community was in trouble and they came also. And so I thought about all of the good people that were helping in the situation and chose to focus on that, because we are a fortunate community to have so many good people in it. And, and so I want to thank the sheriff for, so many of them for putting their lives in danger yesterday. The fire department also helped with that. And so we're very lucky to have all of those men and women who, who work for us and keep us safe. On a much later note, thank Gumbos for putting their, putting their name in the hat for the social district. We're excited to have that program within our, within our downtown. My family came down for the fireworks with our boat and it was a really exciting experience. It was really fun and it didn't, it took about 45 minutes from the mouth of the Clinton River to get down to Mount Clemens, so it wasn't bad. And, and my boys, we were laughing because we docked right by the YMCA, behind the YMCA, and then we, you know, got ourselves settled and went to dinner and we, and the boys got off the boat and, you know, we went with some friends and walked to New Age Noodles and Miles looked over to me and said, "It's like we're on vacation in our own city." And it really is. And if you have a boat, I really encourage you to come down and use our marina and walk down to our restaurants and our, our bars and, or walk around downtown in our social district. It's a really great experience. You, you look at it from a little bit different of a view and it's, it's a nice thing to do, nice staycation. And especially with marina gas fuel prices, it's a much, much less costly ride. I'd like to thank TCB for stepping up and doing these recreational programs at the, at Carnes. We had a lot of different entities that we explored options with and, you know, the entity that stepped up and really made that happen and so I'd like to thank you for that. I'd like to thank Don for his service in the last two and a half years. I can't believe it was your first year, wasn't it a full first year that we actually never had an in-person commission meeting, so?
A little bit more than that.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a challenge, I'd say, for that first year especially, but, you know, it's been, I'm proud of the work we've done. And, and that's a good thing to be able to say. So I hope you are too and I hope you're not a stranger to Mount Clemens. And with that, we will entertain a motion, well, I'm sorry, to go into closed session and we will take a five-minute recess after that.
I move to adjourn the, I'm sorry, I move to the commission to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We'll recess for five minutes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.